For our legislative session 2017-25, November 7th, 2017, for Wycomico County Council. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on all earth as it is in heaven. Give us this state of our daily bread, and we will give you Christ our Savior, and we will give those who trespass against us the nearest kind of temptation, but deliver us from evil, with the highest of the kingdom, and the power and glory forever and ever. Let us be unified in the nine states of America, and in two republics, where there stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve legislative minutes from October 17th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 19th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 26th, 2017, in reference to the fiscal year 17 and 18 budgets.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 26th, 2017, in reference to local preference.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from October 17th, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Good evening, Ms. Hurley, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. President, county council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item for business this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 129, 2017, amending the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan to provide for water and sewer services within the town of Sharp Towns municipal growth area. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM, and we have Mr. Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works, here.
Thank you. Entertained a mo— oh, excuse me, at this time we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 129, 2017. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, and your address, and your concerns. That concludes a public hearing on Resolution 129, 2017. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 129, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Good evening, Mr. Baker, how are you?
Good. Doing good, thanks.
If you could just give us an overview as far as where we are with everything, just a brief overview.
Yes, so this is an amendment from Sharp Town and their engineer to adjust the water and sewer plan to include some expansion and replacement of existing water and sewer mains, add fire hydrants, increase in pipe sizes, remove some dead ends through the system, and just general maintenance of their water and sewer system.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Dallas, how old is the system in Sharp Town?
Oh, gosh. It varies, you know, it started—
I understand there's always an ongoing maintenance.
Yeah. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you how old the sections are that they're looking to—
It's over 40 years old, I don't think.
Sure, probably.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 129, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Hurley?
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 130, 2017, to amend the fiscal year 2018-2022 capital improvement program and capital budget for the public works solid waste division project to construct cell nine at the Newland Park landfill by increasing the total estimated cost from $5 million to $5,260,638. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 130-2017. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this public hea—to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 130, 2017. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 130, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Baker, that's you.
You might have deja vu here in a minute also. So what we've, you know, we've gone out for bid for our cell nine construction. The bids came back in a little bit higher than we had originally invited, so we're looking to amend the CIP. We have money in solid waste accounts to cover these costs. It's for a geosynthetic clay liner, which MDE requires, so that we're protecting the groundwater and soil underneath from the accumulated materials in the landfill after the years.
Questions for anyone? So this isn't really anything like a new additional project from what we've done in the past, it's just—
No, well, we're actually— Exactly. We're permitted for 10 cells, they're not being constructed sequentially, so it's not like we're building nine and then 10, and then we're done. We actually have four permitted cells still left to construct nine, of which, number nine is the next one we're looking to build.
Okay. And how long will they serve the county, those four more cells, approximately?
The total, we're looking at anywhere from, say, 25 years to 28 years or so. Each cell can last, you know, approximately five years or more, depends on— each cell, the geometry varies a little bit, where our compaction rate is and things like that, so, but yeah, we're looking to probably get four to five years more life out of this next cell.
And hopefully, technology will come along and reduce the deposits to the landfill in that period of time.
Yep, exactly.
Maybe that'll last longer, hopefully.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 130, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you. At this time, entertained a motion to adjourn from Wycomico County Council so that we may convene as the Wycomico County Urban Services Commission.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We're now convening as the Urban Services Commission. The first item on the agenda, Mrs. Hurley?
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 02, 2017, to establish a urban service district for street lighting in the Burnt Branch Acres subdivision area.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 02, 2017, in reference to the Burnt Branch Acres. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, and state your name and concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 02, 2017. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 02, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And discussion? And we have, I think, vetted this as best as we could, is that correct, Mrs. Hurley?
This is our second public hearing, yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we— there were a couple different options presented at the first public hearing. One was whether or not we were going to use the high-pressure sodium lights or LED lights. There was also some interest expressed in replacing the proposed wooden poles with fiberglass poles. We explored those costs with Chop Tank Electric, and I believe a letter was sent out by the commission to the property owners outlining the various options, and from what I understand, the majority of those, we have received 25 responses, and 15 of those favored the LED lights with the fiberglass poles. Came at roughly a cost of $5.80 per house, per month, that would be charged to the homeowner's tax bill.
If these are constructed and it's found that they're not significantly covering the areas that they want them covered, can you go back in and move things around or add on?
We'd be— yeah, we'd have to supplement it. It would probably be cost prohibitive to pull the poles out and relocate them, we'd just probably add any poles back.
I'm sure the engineer designed them to cover the area they thought they'd get anyways.
Any other questions from council? The— in the resolution under Exhibit A, it says lighting option to be determined.
Yes, you would need to have a motion to amend the resolution to add the lighting option.
Yeah, we'll have to get a revised agreement from Chop Tank Electric. Right now, I believe the only head shows all four of the options available still, so we can get that narrowed down, or we can just circle which ones we want.
Well, at this stage, we'd have to table it until we have the final—
We know the final cost, though, right?
Yes.
So can we just amend the text to say the fiberglass poles and LED lights?
Is it that simple?
I mean, that'd be great, that would be really good. I hope it's that simple.
Move things along, I guess.
I understand.
I would think so. I've not seen previous lighting district agreements where there were this many options available. Previously, the ones that they just had a— the wooden poles and the high-pressure lights.
Okay, well, why don't we do this, why don't you state what the options are again, that we'll— because we need to make a formal amendment based on your option, on the options that were selected, if you could.
Okay. The first option was for LED—
The final op— what was decided upon?
The final option for the 15 votes was for the LED lights with the fiberglass poles.
And the cost breakdown, or—
The cost was $5.80 per house, per month.
And that's in perpetuity?
Yes. Well, it's for five years.
For five years?
Yes.
That's it, for— just for five years?
Well, that's all in the agreement is good for, and then it's automatically renewable after that. At which point, basically, if the folks want out, there's an out clause, and they can petition to be removed.
But it automatically renews?
Yeah, it automatically renews. You have to petition, you know, basically follow the same process we're following now, and the community can pull itself out of the lighting district.
So this will come up for a vote again in five years, is what you're saying?
No, not if—
If they want out of it?
If they want out of it, it would come up for a vote.
Okay, okay, clear now.
So I just want to specify—
That's fine.
Yeah.
I feel a lot more comfortable if all this were stated formally, we had it in the resolution, we passed it.
Well, that language about them being able to vote themselves out of the lighting district is straight from the code.
Is the code referenced in the resolution? It says, Chapter 97, Section 97B, 97-4B, is that the—
I believe so.
I apologize, because I wasn't— I was—I should’ve— we should've looked at this a little bit earlier. Mr. Taylor, do you have an opinion on this?
I think it'd be wise to bring back a second time.
Right.
This is second.
I mean, if you looked in the actual agreement, it's part of the package, there's all four options are presented, it would just be a matter of indicating which one are the preferences.
Trying to find that, is there any difference in cost?
Well, yeah, that's what we asked the residents to specify, which one, because when we— when the memo, or when the letter went out to the residents, it detailed each option available and each cost. So, the agreement that Chop Tank sent over to us included all of the various options. It's just, right now, the way it's worded, it's got all of them, so I'm assuming that we can just specify which—
A two-week delay isn't really going to hurt anything, is it?
No, sir.
Yeah. But I can't make a motion to table, so it has to come from the council.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor of tabling Resolution— sorry— tabling Resolution 02, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Motion has been made to table Resolution 02, 2017, till the next meeting. That will not require another public hearing, I don't believe, correct?
No, it will not.
Okay.
And we'll clean up the language in the agreement, so it specifies which option is preferred.
Great, that'd be good.
Okay. Should it reference the $5.80?
It does. The cost does.
In the resolution.
Yes. In the agreement with Chop Tank, it references what the costs are for the various options.
And what we'll do is, Mr. Taylor, if you make sure that you take a good look at it before we get it back on the table, that'd be great.
John?
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to some of the residents what just happened? Because they're sitting out there and they're confused.
It's a real— it's sort of a— the actual resolution itself doesn't state particulars in the resolution, such as how many years it'll be, how much you'll be obligated to pay, specifically what type of lighting and poles there are going to be. We could amend all that tonight, put it in, but I don't want to leave out any particular terminology. So where we are right now, it's going to be the LED lights with the metal poles, and it would be—
Fiberglass.
Fiberglass, I'm sorry, fiberglass poles. It'll be about $5.80 a month, and extra $5.80 a month per household, and with an option, I guess, to opt out in five years.
Well, yeah.
Basically, the way the code's written, it allows the community to say, if they don't want to be in this in five years, you can put it to a— petition the commission, the same way you petition for the lights, you can petition the commission to say you don't want to have the lights anymore, and it goes for a vote again. But if you don't petition the commission, it's automatic. You just— it—you'll automatically keep the lights and everything.
So what we simply want to do, we want to move forward with it, but we want to make sure, I'd rather have it all stated in the exact resolution as opposed to trying to piecemeal amendments together tonight, okay?
It'll be clear three years or five years from now, when somebody looks at this, to understand what's going on, so.
Okay, all right.
But it's only going to be a two-week delay.
It's only a two-week delay on our part. Yeah.
Excuse me, is the $5.80 every year changeable? Does it stay $5.80?
It's a good question. Is the $5.80, I'm assuming it stays—
As far as— that stays the same, yeah.
Never changes.
Even after the ones hopped out, it's still the $5.80, even the ones that want to pull out of the— because you're doing it for household, correct?
You were hopped out as a community, just like you're getting the lights as a community. If for some reason the community doesn't want those lights, every five years, they have the ability to vote it out and say, "We don't—we want out of this."
And we'll get a clarification on that, too, Mr. Taylor, for the next meeting.
I think what Dallas is saying, and just for her information, that individual homeowners could not opt out.
Correct. It has to be done— it has to be done by the majority, and that won't be reflected in the resolution, because that's written in the end of the county code. What we're going to do is, right now, the way the— the way the agreement with Chop Tank is worded, all of the various options for the lighting and the poles is presented. We're just going to clean up that line, which just specified, we're getting fiberglass poles, LED lights, and here's the cost.
Entertained a motion from the Urban Services Commission to adjourn so that we may reconvene as Wycomico County Council in legislative session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We're now reconvened as the Wycomico County Council in legislation— legislative session. The first, it's you.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 131, 2017. This resolution is for the issuance and sale of $20,540,000 general obligation, fully registered bonds, subject to upward or downward adjustment, but not to exceed $24,810,000. This amount includes up to $10 million in new bonds for the project shown on Page 6 of the resolution, as well as the refunding of the 2009 Build America Beautiful Bonds. And we have Mrs. Doran Parks here, Director of Finance.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 131, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions from council?
So, so it says, the plan is to borrow $10 million, but it could borrow up to $24 million, is that— can you just clarify that?
I can. Our plan is to borrow the $10 million in new money for this year. We have the option of refunding the 2009 Build America Beautiful Bonds. That option, from the last information I received, was towards the end of October, could save us close to a million over the life of the bonds by refinancing them. We have not made a decision on that, and we do not have to make a decision on it until closer to bond sale.
Will you get ahead prior to what the interest rate will be?
We'll start watching it real close, closer to the 12th.
And that'll determine whether you go for $10 or $20,000.
I mean, because we know they are going— they are going to go up.
They possibly will go up.
Right.
Between now and then.
Do we know the rating, a rating before then, or did we find that out at the same time?
Our ratings, we should have, I think, by the end of the week.
Okay.
If not, the beginning of next week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just add?
Yes, sir.
The bond sale is scheduled for December the 12th at 1:30.
Thank you.
Are we agreeing in the meeting?
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 131, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item is Resolution Number 132, 2017, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Department of Finance's software support account in the amount of During the fiscal year 2018 budget process, the Tyler Technologies Application Service Contract was not budgeted to the new agreement amount, and the Finance Department is now requesting funding for the shortfall to cover its portion of the service contract amount.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 132, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 132, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 133, 2017, approving and publishing the dates of the official holidays for county employees for the year 2018.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 133, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 133, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Before we go on, and I don't forget, Delegate Charles Otto is here, and so is Delegate Carl Anderton. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you being here.
Delegate—
Mike, we're glad to have you here, too, from Johnny Mout's office. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Board of Ed members.
You go ahead. We also have members of the Board of Education here as well, we appreciate you being here. John, thank you very much for being here. Am I missing anybody?
Mike Murray.
Excuse me?
Mike Murray.
Oh, there you are, Michael, didn't see you. And Mike Murray.
Dave.
All right, have everybody covered? If I missed you, stand up. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Resolution Number 134, 2017, confirming the appointment of Mary Drex Buchanan to the Wycomico County Commission on Aging. The Commission assists the elderly in the Wycomico— in Wycomico County with health, social, economic, recreational, and environmental problems. The resolution in the briefbook has the middle name misspelled, that has now been fixed, and the corrected resolution is on the council table.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 134, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 134, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
The next several resolutions are appointments of council members to various boards, starting with Resolution Number 135, 2017, confirming the reappointment of John T. Cannon as a designated Director of PAC 14 Incorporated.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 135, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 136, 2017, confirming the appointment of Ernest F. Davis to the Wycomico County School Building Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 136, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Session.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 137, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Ernest F. Davis to the Wycomico County Local Management Board.
So moved.
Entertained a motion to approve— I got a loss. I got a loss. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 137, 2017.
Still so moved.
Second? Hurry up, before he takes that. Second? I need a second, all right. Any discussion, John? Any discussion, Councilman Hall?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 137, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 138, 2017, confirming the appointment of Matt Holloway to the Shore Up Incorporated.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 138, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 139, 2017, confirming the reappointment of Joe Holloway to the Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development SWEAD Board of Directors.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 139, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 140, 2017, confirming the reappointment of John B. Hall to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 140, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 141, 2017, confirming the reappointment of John B. Hall to the Salisbury-Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 141, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 142, 2017, confirming the appointment of Larry W. Dodd to the Wycomico County Social Services Advisory Board.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 142, 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 143, 2017, confirming the appointment of Joe Holloway to the Core Service Agency Mental Health Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 143, 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you would like to share, please come to the podium, please, and state your name and your concerns. Thank you. I think what we'll do is just state your name and if you are a citizen of Wacomiko County. Originally, we had been, and all along, we have always said, state your name and your address, but there's a huge concern about stating your address publicly, so we've dropped that. But in order to stay somewhat in line with what the intent was, I guess we would at least have you make a comment as to whether or not you were a citizen of Wacomiko County. I think it serves the same purpose. Thank you. Mr. McCain, how are you? Still a resident of Wacomiko County?
I'm Bill McCain, resident of Wacomiko County, former council. I know you have a work session later this evening regarding the potential property donation acceptance on the property on Conley Mill Road.
If we could hold you off one second, I think the mic's not working.
Do you want me to start over? I'm Bill McCain, resident of Wacomiko County. I know you have a work session later this evening regarding the potential property donation acceptance for the property on Conley Mill Road. I'm actually here on behalf of the Natural Resource Advisory, Conservation Advisory Committee, which Councilman Hall is a member of, and thank you for reappointing him. We've sent a letter, which I think you all have a copy of, and I wanted to read that letter this evening, it's relatively short, so the letter is addressed to the Wacomiko County Council and President John Cannon. It was recently brought to the attention of the county's Natural Resource Conservation Advisory Committee that a county has been approached by the owners of Conley Mill Limited Partnership to potentially donate the Conley Mill Partnership property along Conley Mill Road to Wacomiko County. We further understand that this donation would be used for the use of enjoyment and for the residents of Wacomiko County. As you are likely aware, the subject properties are shown as Parcell 167, 68, and 69 on Wacomiko County Tax Map 20. The properties are located at the headwaters of Conley Mill Branch, Wood Creek, and Lantern Pond Run, which all feed into the north Wacomiko prong of the Wacomiko River. This area, as you also know, is located strategically in and abutting the Paleochannellochfer, which has been a concern over recent years. Our committee has discussed the importance of this area in great detail and are very excited to have heard of the potential donation and acquisition of the property for the county. We would like for you to accept this letter and an understanding of full and complete support of the NRCAC for the proposed donation. Providing enjoyment and use of the property with a low-impact development plan would provide not only additional recreational opportunities for the county, but equally as important, protection of the Paleochannellochfer and of headwaters of the Wacomiko River. Our committee is in full support of the acceptance of the property and willing and able to provide insight and recommendations on a responsible, low-impact use on the property. We also will be sending a letter to Mr. Bob Culver, County Executive, expressing our support for acquisition and donation acceptance. Many thanks for your leadership and for your consideration of our recommendation in this matter. Please contact me or any other member of the committee if you have any questions. And this is signed by our Chair, Judas Stripli. To switch hats, I would also like to make a comment. I have WR McCannan Associates, I'm President of WR McCannan Associates, and we're an advisory real estate company on valuation and matters, and I would also like to comment from my professional perspective that we routinely advise any of our clientele, anytime there's land abutting or adjacent to land they already own and are using, when that opportunity arises, it's very commonplace for us to recommend to them that they should certainly take advantage of that opportunity. And in this case, professionally, I would certainly make the recommendation that you accept this donation. I think in the long run, it shows a lot of vision on the part of the county, so from that standpoint, I would also like to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. McCain.
Yep, thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. That concludes public comments. Council comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to send thanks to the Willards Volunteer Fire Company, and possibly there could have been some folks there from Powellville. I had a little mishap a couple of weeks ago, and you don't know how important those folks are until you need them, and they were there pretty quick, took care of my problem, got me to the hospital, and everything's worked out so far, so I just wanted to send those thanks down to Willards and to Powellville. Thank you.
That's great. Any other comments? At this time, entertained a motion to adjourn from legislative session to an open work session followed by a closed session in accordance with Section 3-305B7 to consult with the council to obtain legal advice to preserve attorney-client privilege. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned. We now go into open work session. First item on the agenda is the Personnel Manual, Chapter 14 is the lucky chapter tonight. I know we have Mrs. Sharon Morris, former Deputy Director of Administration, Mr. Matt Kramer, former Council Administrator, and Mr. Ed Baker, former county attorney. A lot of heavyweights. Good evening. Make sure you have a microphone, if you could, please, and just for the public, so that they know, can put a face with a name, if you could state your name, please. You can begin, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, you've already indicated that we're going to be looking at Chapter 14 this evening. It's probably the longest chapter in the manual, but we don't think that it'll necessarily be the longest in terms of presentation in your discussion. I think Mrs. Morris is going to start this section? Or am I going to start this? Am I going to start this session? Well, we'll listen to Mrs. Morris. The beginning of this chapter indicates the purpose, which is to provide regular full-time and regular part-time employees with a comprehensive benefits package, as enumerated within this chapter. It sets out the ground rules so that the county knows what's expected of it, and the employees know what's expected of them, and the circumstances which may come up, that there is a prescribed indefinite way of resolving them. The only change that we made in the beginning here recommending is on their 1403, Leaves and Holidays, the second line, it says, the current language says, refers to approved by the appropriate authority, and that authority is actually the department head or the department heads designate, so we thought it would just be more clear if that change was made. And under 1403, also B, at the top of the next page, at the very end of that, leaves shall be submitted in units, no less. The current manual provides for 30 minutes, and the recommended change is to be for 15 minutes. That, there are two components to that, or potential components, employees that use the time clock, which I believe is the majority of employees. If an employee clocks in after the appointed time, if the employee is more than seven minutes late, then the employee would be considered to be late by 15 minutes. If the employee is early, again, that's seven minutes, over seven or less than seven, so we're trying to make, suggest that it be consistent in that respect. And if an employee is coming to work and is going to have to be late, then in order to avoid being late, the employee would have, currently has the option of taking leave time. And if an employee is eight minutes late, it's a little bit severe to dock them 30 minutes.
Okay.
Not substantial, but that was the reason for it.
Okay.
If we go into, on page 73, if you have questions or issues before that, just please let me know, I'm trying to highlight the areas which might be a little bit different. On page 73, this is 14, 1403, yes, that's a long one, isn't it? F, sick leave, under sick leave. Efforts have been made over the years in order to make it understood that sick leave is to be taken if an employee is sick. Sometimes employees have the, some employees have the idea that the sick leave is theirs, they can use it for whatever purpose they want. There have been a number of efforts made over the years to discourage that, and one of them is in the language here, emphasizing that the sick leave is an extremely valuable employee privilege, which should be conserved and used only when necessary.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes, sir.
Going up just a bit there on page 71, it's talking about the maximum accrual under E1. It says annual leave may be accumulated during the year, but any unused leave in excess of 360 hours. So you're saying that someone could accrue nine weeks of leave in a year?
The annual?
Yes.
That's the same as it is now.
Okay.
If you look down Table 15 at the bottom of that page, employees accrue a number of days per year relative to their number of years of service. And the maximum of that is 17 and above, and the days of annual leave for that is a maximum of 20. Now, at the present time, if an employee does not use all of that annual leave, it continues to accrue, and that's where the number can get higher over time, but there's a limit to that as well.
Do you want me to kick you on sick leave? Did you want me to kick you on?
Yeah.
Sick leave. Do you want to mention anything on hardship?
I think we'll do that. On page 72, we'll start there with the hardship thingy, because that's new.
Thank you.
And I'm pleased to present this portion of the manual, because I really worked to get it included, and I appreciate it being considered. Over the course of years, many employees have come to the administrative office in hopes of cashing out accrued leave that they've worked for, they've earned for hardship cases, and this section addresses that. The Director of Administration has the final decision on whether or not it's approved. There's a, let me list here of reasonable requests, reasons, other expenses are determined, but an employee can petition the Director of Administration to cash out if they have hardships for medical purposes, for anything that they can prove they do not have direct resources for.
The sick leave on page 73, starting at paragraph F, was, I would say, the subject of great ideal debate and discussion. It's probably one of the biggest changes that you've seen that the committee is recommending at this point in time. The current accrual rate for sick leave allows accrual of 1,040 hours or 130 days. One of the things that brought this to our attention and our concern is the impact that large accruals on sick leave have on the county. When somebody leaves the county service, retires, et cetera, they can result in fairly large payouts. What the committee is proposing at the current time for the council's consideration is a transition. We've picked an arbitrary date, which was July 1st, 2018. For those people hired after that date, the maximum accrual will be 672 hours, which translates to 84 days, 12 weeks. That is a somewhat arbitrary number, but what we looked at was the FMLA leave, that is 12-week leave period. That would be the maximum accrual for those employees. Employees that are currently on the county payroll will still have the right to accrue up to the maximum, at which time they'd be frozen. What we're also suggesting is that if you have a very good employee who doesn't use the sick leave or doesn't use all of it, that he's paid out at the end of the year, calendar year, for any unused sick leave. The debate on that is whether or not they should be paid for it. It's an incentive to keep people from abusing. Some people would use their sick leave almost as annual leave.
And you're considering the 84 days, you're, as 84 days slash 12 weeks, you're considering weekends, I guess, you're considering seven days in the week and not five?
No, I think it's still 40, 40 hours is what, calculated still. I didn't do the math.
It does 40 hours, yeah, it does, it does. But then you said 12, I understand, I just was a little curious on that.
Um.
I mean, it's not a straight 12-week if you're...
No, not a calendar week.
Not calendar weeks, work weeks.
We've recommended the elimination of the catastrophic pool, because there's, if an employee has 12 sick days and only uses 10, he's paid out for the other two, so it shouldn't roll over into a catastrophic pool. That's essentially the major change to regular sick leave. The provisions that are, you know, on top of page 74 about the earning rate, the use of sick leave, remain the same, they're the same as in the additional one, I mean, the current one. There are additions to what constitutes a family member. We've added domestic partner and stepchildren.
Mr. Baker? When it states that employees hired prior to July 1st, 2018, that have accumulated in excess of 672 hours, will have their accumulated sick leave frozen, what does that mean?
It means they would not accrue anymore until they have used enough of their sick leave over the years to get down to the new maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Those are essentially the only changes to, the major changes to sick leave. As I said, the July 1st, 2018, it was just an arbitrary date, whatever the date of the adoption of the manual be.
For the 672 hours, that's 84 days, but how is that 12 weeks?
It's not a calendar week, it's a work week, it should be 40 hours.
Yeah, that's what I was asking earlier.
80 hours on 12 weeks would be 480 hours. Monday through Friday, there are five days.
Because if you took 672 hours and you divide it by 40, you got 16.8.
16.8.
Yeah. So that's why...
That's what threw you off. It is calculated as seven days, it should be only five.
That's what I was, yeah. So, we're arguing with that?
I think the intent was a 12 weeks, 40, so it'd be 480.
480 hours.
So the 672 is going to be adjusted?
That would be a proposal, yes.
In order to not take your time here, that be looked at.
Okay.
I guess I could continue, that was my section, but rest of the provisions on 74 are the same as, relatively the same as in the current manual. There are minor changes like paragraph 7 on page 74, administrative director was changed to Director of Administration, those kinds of changes have been made. On page 75, I believe that's a change as well. Yeah, that on page one of my notes. We've eliminated the payout, I'm sorry, the payout at retirement or discharge, layoff, it was a 1 to 4 ratio, that's been eliminated. Again, transitioned in for new employees. Current employees would still have that right.
So they're certainly going to retire a little bit earlier than they maybe had planned to initially, is that correct?
Right.
Obviously.
I might be jumping the gun here, but on number 7 on page 74, while I got it on my mind, how does that work if in serious illness or accident, if it's an accident involving the county that their own...
If it's an accident involving the county that they're on workers' comp? And workers' comp takes and pays that, and I know it takes a while to get workers' comp, so they can use their sick pay, you know, as a bridge, I guess. How would that work as far as reimbursing their sick, you know, reimbursing that, or would they be paying it twice?
Well, in fact, I have to look forward a little bit, I haven't, it's been a while since I looked at it, but I think the county policy is to continue to pay for thirty days.
Pardon me?
The county continues to pay for thirty days, up to thirty days until the workers' comp kicks in.
Kicks in, okay, alright. So it wouldn't affect their sick pay in any kind of way?
No, should not.
Okay, alright.
And, yeah, page seventy-five is the sick leave pool. That's been substantially revised.
What page are you on?
Seventy-five. There was some debate over it, but I think the committee's decision was to continue with the concept of a sick leave pool. This provision here is somewhat different from what we've got currently. This is modeled on the state, state sick leave pool. It tightens up the policy a good deal, it sets forth the criteria. It's the same process, if you're a current employee, you can assign or transfer eight hours of sick leave into the sick leave pool. It now provides that if you do that, that's, you're a member of the sick leave pool for two years. At the end of the two-year period, if you want to stay a member of the sick leave pool, you have to donate another eight. Has provisions, regulations on who qualifies to become a member, and a large number of items on the bottom of page seventy-five in Roman numeral three, who qualifies for it. The sick leave pool committee would be consistent of the Assistant Director of Administration, the Council Administrator, the Finance Director, and the Human Resources Director. Provides that they can have closed meetings because it involves health issues, and then provides how you make a request for the use of leave time. Actually, from the bottom of page seventy-six, compensatory leave, bereavement leave are virtually the same as in the current manual. Again, for bereavement leave, we've altered the definition of immediate family to add the legalized domestic partner and stepchildren as members of the immediate family.
Mr. Cannon, I just had a question. What is a legalized domestic partner? As opposed to an ordinary domestic partner, I mean, isn't, isn't, wouldn't legalized domestic partner be a spouse?
No, I'm not sure where this was recommended from. I don't know if it came from HR. I would say it probably had to be somebody that's gone through a ceremony or a commitment of some type.
I think it's kind of a unusual turn of phrase.
As Mr. Baker says, someone that is married as opposed to just a living, and they could be living with you for fifteen years, but still if you're not married, formally married. I mean, that's, hey, you guys are the attorneys.
That's kind of why I'm asking, because I don't know what the heck that means.
I'll check that, so the prior addition didn't contain the word legalized, so I'll find out where that came from.
Perhaps when the work group did this, which is now-
It was five or six years ago.
I'm not, I don't think that the law in Maryland with regard to marriage had changed yet, so.
Cabal, if you could, take a look at it, that you wanted to flag. Thank you, Mr. Cabal.
Personal leave is-
What page are you on?
Still on page seventy-seven at the bottom. I believe that is still the current, there's no changes to that from the current manual. And when I refer to the current manual, I'm talking about the one that's currently in effect. The current manual did have a section that referred to terminal leave, and that has been omitted from this manual. Terminal leave was permitting somebody to use accrued leave as they're coming up on their retirement or leaving the county. So for example, if they said, I want to retire on July first, and I've got thirty days of accrued leave, you can actually leave the workforce June. And we've terminated that. For those people who had large amounts of leave time scheduled, that could allow them to leave the county for five or six months, still get paychecks, and occupy the position so that it couldn't be filled, so. And it can still be cashed out, so that's-
If you go back, go back to the sick leave pool, accrued time that's put in by the volunteers-
Yes.
Over a period of years or time, how much does that builds up? Does it all get used at some point in time, or is the county use it, is it?
Well, it's been two or three years since I had any information on that, but I think there's still a more than adequate number of hours in there.
It's, it's all on paper. The sick leave pool has no financial impact on the county at all.
Well, I realize that, but people aren't voluntarily giving their hours, okay? So at some point in time, if you get so many in there that you look at it and you say, well, it'll take forever to use this up, what happens to that?
If that were to happen, I don't know if it would require an amendment to the manual, it might. But if it did, the council could amend the manual to say there can be a pause for a certain amount of time. And when the pool got down, the contributions could resume.
So that's something the HR director, I suppose, would have to keep track of, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Steve.
We do have an audit of the sick leave pool as part of the annual audit plan for the current year.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Back on page seventy-eight, yellow-paid leave. All of those remain the same. We have, I don't have any indication that we made any changes to those or recommendations on those. The administrative leave, I believe, is a relatively-
On page eighty.
On page eighty. So that hasn't been changed. Mentoring leave, I think you all enacted very recently.
That was added by legislation during this term.
As well as the liberal leave. Military inactive duty leave, father, we did not change, nor do we change anything under the FMLA provisions. I don't believe we made any changes to the rest of-
On page eighty-six, we did make the adjustment on in-absence without leave.
Oh, that's right.
We made that language, three days, to be consistent with existing policy. Leave for any period of time is subject to disband action. We changed that to three days.
Which is the correct manual.
And I don't believe we made any changes on the workers' compensation. Fourteen oh four B, one, if I can find it in my members. There was one section in the old manual that specified coverages. Basically said that the county would provide health insurance, vision insurance, dental insurance, et cetera. That was eliminated because those specific items are addressed later in the manual, so it wasn't thought it was necessary. And on fourteen oh five, on page eighty-seven, this manual updates the language on payment of social security, mainly a technical change. I believe that was it, all the changes, all the remainder of chapter fourteen. It is, no changes are, same as the current manual. Counsel, have any questions on any of those sections?
Okay, any questions from anyone?
And as you, as you may consider this further, if you'll give necessarily whatever directions you want as to where you want to go next, we'll be pleased to do that.
Okay.
We'll chime in at one term on legalized.
We're hopeful of getting into the meat of the discussion, and I know you are as well.
Okay. Obviously, chapter fifteen is next. Based on your workload, what do you think would be a sufficient number of chapters to review?
We did not, we did not do anything with chapter fifteen. Chapter sixteen might involve a little bit of discussion. We wrestled with this, and it seems to be, it seems to be a very detailed answer, looking for a question. And we have, when we get to that point, we'll make a suggestion to you that will make it much simpler.
When we get to, when you say when we get to that point?
When we discuss chapter sixteen.
I'm not sure, I think we can probably finish all three of them in one session.
Because we did do anything to fifteen.
Yeah, we did, no changes were made in fifteen.
Other than any of the earlier chapters that the council wants to look at that we haven't covered.
I think we may, once I think we get through all the chapters, then we would want to do a re-review. Okay, well, just, necessarily, we'll get in touch with us, or? Yes. Alright. Yes. Any other questions? No, any questions? Great, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Stormwater Management Plan of Action, Mr. Baker, any of it?
Hello again.
What do you mean again?
The flavor of the day. You're the flavor of the day.
Right?
Ah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
Okay, so it's been about a month since we first came before council to discuss the drainage concerns throughout the county. At that time, we talked about our approach to drainage being the three Es, which are education, engineering, and enforcement. I know there's a lot of questions still coming up about Pratt Road, so that's why I just wanted you all to know the discussion about Pratt Road will be covered under the engineering section. So the first E is education, one of the aspects that we're looking to help get the word out with things citizens can do to aid on their own with drainage issues, or adjusting our website, or rather adding a page to the Public Works website dedicated to stormwater. We've looked around at a couple other agencies, jurisdictions that experience flooding. A lot of these concerns are mirrored in the Florida region with the flat topography, with the shallow marshlands and things like that. So what I did was I took a sampling of some of those locations and just presented them here. What we'll do is we'll piece together the stuff that we like, throw out the stuff that doesn't really apply, because again, some of this is Florida, you don't have to worry about gators, and put together a proposed website as a starting point to reference those citizens as far as how they can aid in maintaining their swales and ditches and storm drains. As you can see on the bottom slide, you know, keeping those clear of pine shats is a big help, keeping it clear of debris and yard waste and not just dumping that out into the gutter. Maintaining your swales and your ditches, not killing off the grass, that type of thing, are some of the suggestions that they have on these websites. We also discussed sending out educational flyers in the tax bills. The one on the left is again from the Florida region. It's, you know, simple, straight to the point, very customer-friendly. There's a larger one over to the, I'm sorry, I said the right, to the left. The one on to the right is the, what Inarondo County sends out. They have some different regulations on their swales. So not, again, not all of that applies, but it's an example of the type of material that we can custom to Comico County and send out to help get the word out about what's going on. It'd also be a good way to get residents aware of some of these regional meetings within the county that we've talked about, going around to the different, you know, quadrants of the county and discussing with the communities their drainage concerns and the problems that they're seeing, so it's a way for us to remind them, hey, you know, here's our scheduled meetings for this quarter or for this year, the locations they're going to be at to help, again, reiterate these concerns.
You said you would use them for what now? To hand out needs?
No, these would be the flyers that we would be sending out in the tax bills to educate the public about the maintenance and responsibilities. One of the things that we would list on here is where, when, and where we are going to have our drainage meetings at. One of the items that was discussed was a reach, kind of quadrants, getting together with quadrants in the county with those community leaders, with those subdivisions and HOAs, to meet with them and discuss their concerns, see what problems they're experiencing, and then what we can do to help them or provide them some guidance and direction.
So that's, so that's what you're planning, you're planning to move forward with those?
Yeah, yeah, nothing's been taken off the board yet, it's just, you know, there's only so much we can get done in thirty days, so right now, we're just working on, you know, I wasn't trying to reinvent the wheel. I was trying to see what other jurisdictions were doing, and we'll move forward from here.
Okay.
Our next E is engineering, starting off with Pratt Road. We put out an RFP for Drainage Feasibility Study that got sent out on October twentieth. We had the bids due on November first. We had the bids due on November first. The low bidder for that job was thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Right now, we don't have money to cover that study. What we do have, though, is potentially money to cover a, that engineering firm to do the grant applications. There were some applications, some various grants through DNR, through MDE, through HUD that were made aware of us through the various helps of the various delegates back when during the flooding was occurring. What we're going to do is, or what I would like to do is pay this consultant to file our grant applications. They would then, which are, I believe they open up in December, file those, and then once they get awarded that grant, use that money to then fund the rest of the feasibility study. So we'll use a little bit of our money to seed these grant applications to then turn around and get that to fund the larger study.
When you say drainage feasibility study, what exactly were you, were you thinking, I mean, was that open-ended, or was there?
Well, right now, what we're doing is specifically for Pratt Road, we want to know what's the best way to address the drainage. I mean, the obvious, you know, one big answer to start on that is, well, let's make all the pipes bigger. And we talked about that last time, we would have to make the entire system bigger. Another possibility might be, well, do we reroute this to another drainage system? Do we disconnect more ponds further upstream? So those kinds of questions are what the feasibility study will answer. Once we know, are we increasing pipe size or rerouting flow to another location? That's where we get into the hardcore design of what pipe size, what elevations, what pathways are we looking at. So right now, this, the goal of the feasibility study is simply to tell us what is the best pathway to follow, you know? Can we take this further on down to Upper Ferry Road, or are we bucking grade too much? And no, you really should continue on the existing pathway. Or is there another route somewhere out there that we're not even thinking of?
And so what's the timeframe then if you're going to have the, use our money to apply for grants, get grants, do the study? I mean, is this two or three-year process?
So the grants open up, the applications they begin accepting in December, the websites indicate that they look to award in March and April timeframe. We would then award that, and then they are typically, the study would be done in, within a year. So that would come back and get us the information that we have for what direction to go, then use that to apply for more grants, to begin the design of whatever improvement it is that's going to be made out there.
So you're not looking at a fix by next summer then, for Pratt Road?
A large-scale systemic by next summer, no. That's beyond our ability to accomplish within that short of a timeframe. Because again, you know, that system was sized for the storm that county requirements mandate, and it just got more rain than it could handle. If we're talking about going in and taking something that was designed from a two-year or ten-year storm and saying, design it for a hundred-year storm, that's a significant work effort in terms of design and for construction. It's going to be a long-term process. You know, it's not like there's a, there's not a clogged pipe out there that, oh, we're just going to go and pull that out, and that's our temporary fix. Everything was open, everything was flowing full, the system was working as intended. It just got more rain than it could handle.
I have to disagree with you saying that everything was flowing full, because to go back to our last conversation, the culvert that you guys put in to access to do the ditch maintenance, the water was higher on that side, and it was not level all the way down through and through West Nistale. It was, that was the bottleneck that was causing that backup in those houses. And I disagree that there, we have certainly had this mataring before, since those houses were built there, they've never had flooding like this. And that flooding did not occur until that culvert was put in. The simplest fix to me is just put two pipes there, double the flow that can go through there. In the meantime, go ahead and do some studies, but let's do something immediately that at least try it, at least hit ball, something to alleviate these constituents' concerns before the next rainy season. I mean, that's, I don't know, it's...
Before we jump the gun and pass a bunch of laws that we don't need?
Yeah, it's, I mean, I don't know, a bunch of farm owners and tractors can really get some water moving. I mean, it's, we've done that for years. It just, if you look at the images, and I went out there, I mean, the water was in everybody's yard on one side of the culvert, but the other side, that ditch was not full. It was lower, and it was within the banks of that ditch. It was, I mean, the ditch was full, but it was within the banks, flowing all the way down towards West Nistale.
We'll certainly take a look at that.
Okay. Thanks.
I mean, to echo, I mean, it's, I understand more of a long-term solution, but, you know, we, you know, we have concerns of, you know, what happens next summer. I mean, are they just prepared for another, you know, possibility? You know, it may not happen, but, you know, we know that there are problems there, and this being possibly two years for a solution, does, it doesn't give much comfort to the folks in that area, I don't think. I mean, I, I'm hoping at least something could be done to maybe alleviate in the meantime, you know, some of that, some of that flow before next summer. So I would certainly encourage that.
Yeah, we'll certainly take a look at adding a second pipe.
Yeah, you don't think you have staff on hand who are qualified and enough staff on hand to go out and look and to try to evaluate what the concerns might be, to actually drive down these roads and recognize maybe where?
I drove the entire path from Pratt Road down to the river and observed the flow. If you're talking about having a staff member, I've got one engineer besides myself to do a feasibility study. No, it's significantly beyond our workload.
Are you seeking out grants to pay for the thirty-five? I mean, I know you talked about doing the thirty-four, five, and then in part of that, you're asking for someone to do a feasibility study and at the same time to seek out grants? So you're looking for someone who's an engineer as well as a grant writer?
Yes, a lot of the firms in the area do that. You hire them to apply for grants, and then they do that. I can tell you from when I did work in the consultant services, a lot of the firms in this area, they help the rural communities and help these local jurisdictions by going out and finding funds from USDA, from HUD, from Community Development Block grants to get that money, because they know the towns don't have the money to do these studies and do these improvements. So they stay in business by finding the grants and the low-interest loans for the municipalities so that they can in turn fund these projects, because places like Hurlock and places like Del Mar and places like Fruitland don't have, you know, the resources. So yes, it's very common for engineers to do this type of work.
Isn't it a case where we could have staff that could, I mean, because we know right now, just from, you know, reaching out to our local eastern shore delegation, that DNR has grants, MEMA has grants, at least two of them feasible possibilities? So...
And that's the grants that we're talking about having?
Right, but I mean, you can't have employees, county employees, that can seek out those grants?
I've got one engineer. He is swamped doing plan review, he's swamped doing stormwater inspections, he's swamped doing dam inspections, bridge inspections, working with the landfill for their compliance.
Right.
You know, there's only so much room, only, so to answer your question, no. We simply can't do this in-house. If I had four or five engineers, possibly...
This is exactly what we did with Morris Mill, John. George Milesen Burr did, did the grant writing, got, got the low-interest loans, got the grants, and at the same time, we're doing the engineering. So when, when you're looking at trying to re-engineer something that just simply is an engineer, and I'm talking about the broader scale, Pratt Road may be different, but when we're looking at a county that was engineered for rainfall that's quite different than the rainfall that we've been getting, and quite different than the rainfall that we can expect, that, that's a, that's a large-scale undertaking that really the county doesn't have the expertise to undertake. So actually, in the long term, we'll make more progress more quickly if we export that to people who've got the guns to do that type work. So I think we're really talking about two different issues here. One is, okay, is there an immediate fix that may help the situation at Pratt Road? But I don't think we want to focus on, well, let's do a Band-Aid here, let's do a Band-Aid there. I think we have a large-scale stormwater issue in the county, and I think that that really requires a comprehensive look, and to do that, we really need arms and legs. We need a lot of expertise that we don't have in-house. So I think that's, I think that's what Dallas is trying to get across.
I agree. I didn't realize that we were so short-staffed to be able to address what I, I mean, Morris Mill was, was a completely different scenario. I mean, that, that sort of came out of nowhere, and that was almost emergency relief that was needed for health, for health issues, health concerns.
Yeah, but for stormwater engineering, again, it...
It seems like part of what the county should be planning, their processes all along, year after year after year, and not, you know, I was surprised that we would bring someone in to do a feasibility study, and then after that's done, I think it's long-term. I don't think it's just...
Well, the county was doing that. The county has been doing stormwater planning for the better part of four decades. It's not working. So we, we need to, to stand back, and we need to say, if we're contemplating the type of precip that we've been seeing in the past several years, and you cast that forward, I, I think that we need to take a comprehensive look at what, what does our stormwater infrastructure need to look like in order to handle that kind of precip? And to Dallas's point, you can make a change here that will have far-reaching impacts, perhaps downstream, it can even have impacts upstream, because water doesn't understand that it's crossing a jurisdictional boundary. It goes where it wants to go. So we literally are saying, we need to stand back and re-engineer the county's stormwater network, and that involves not only public infrastructure, but perhaps private infrastructure. And, and I think when you do that, I think you really need experts focused against that.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the point that we're trying to make.
Right, I agree with you completely, but I'm, I'm just wondering as to what length we address this through just, you know, a feasibility study, or whether it's something more systemic, where we really need to look at our staff as a county. You know, I mean, when we, when we want to expand a ball field, we don't necessarily do a feasibility study. We look at what the options are, we work with the other partners and the other vendors who are suggesting that if you, you bring in three more fields, then you're going to have so much more. I mean, we don't, we don't do a feasibility study every time we try to approach a larger problem in the county.
But in that scenario, if you're looking to put in ball fields, and you said, okay, we want to increase the capacity of the ball fields in the county, the first question is, okay, well, where do you want to put them? Where is the best logical location? Is plopping everybody down in the same centralized area?
But we've done that, though. I mean, we've done that, and it was done without a feasibility study. My thought here is...
No, we really did have an engineering study done, but I, I think what you're, I think what I'm hearing from, from you, from Matt, from Mark, is that we need to proceed with a sense of urgency, and we understand that. And, but in proceeding with a sense of urgency, I think we need to be certain that we're taking at the same time a long-term view, so that we're not going to come back later and redo things that, that we've done, because systemically, they're not working.
Well, I guess maybe the question might be, in, in doing this feasibility study, okay, because I haven't seen the RFP, I'm not quite sure what they're planning to review.
Right.
I think we already had one bite out of that apple when we did it for the fire service, and we paid for a study of a fire service that we absolutely couldn't use. If I don't, it was a waste of money.
Led to a pretty good agreement.
I don't think it had much to do with that agreement. But my point is, I haven't seen the RFP on the feasibility study. Is the feasibility study going to tell us whether or not we need to add more staff? Is it going to tell us that, where we have to address infrastructure problems? Is it going to tell us how we might address our problems through ordinances and the management of possible ordinances? How broad a scope is the feasibility study?
The feasibility study is looking directly at Pratt Road and how to eliminate the flooding on Pratt Road. It is talking about putting the pipes in the ground and what's the best direction to take those pipes. Do we just simply go in, in the existing drainage pathway, and increase everything to a four- or five-foot diameter pipe? Or is it more cost-sensitive, or more cost-benefit to take this, the other direction down Pratt Road to White, or rather, to Upper Ferry Road, and then take it to the river? Or are we going to get more bang for our buck by disconnecting the systems that drain across Nanicoke Road and take them over to Anderson Mill Pond or some other area? There are different, there are different options here, and to simply proceed with, let's just make everything downstream bigger, might not be the right answer. The right answer might be, let's disconnect Hunter's Mill and send it to another direction.
I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is the same thing that happened in this study for the fire service. He came back and said, well, this is, and I think we paid him thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars, and he came back, he goes, well, this is a good start. I just don't have all the information I would need in order to give you a broader perspective of what your solutions might be. My concern here is that you bring in a, you bring in somebody that does a study, and they say, oh, well, this is Pratt Road, but no, no, that goes to Hunter Mills, and that goes, and that goes to Delaware, and this goes down to Nistale, and this goes to the Wacomico River, and this goes down to Eden, but that's not what you hired me to do. I'm trying to figure out what the realm of this, this feasibility study, where it ends, where it starts and where it ends, what we've requested.
I mean, I can certainly forward you a copy of the scope and a copy of all the proposals we got. We got three bids back in. This was the lowest one. The next one was in the mid-forties, and the next one was in the upper forties.
Well, I don't, again, I mean...
And these are, these are local firms to Wacomico County that know our drainage system that have been here working for years. Maybe reviewing over the scope will help alleviate, you know?
It would be nice to know, yeah. It would be nice to know.
Yeah.
And again, so this is specifically infrastructure. It's not, they're not going to go as far as to say, well, you know, you have, you have a working ditch here, you don't have a working ditch there. It has nothing to do with infrastructure. It has to do with the fact that you have some homeowners who aren't digging out their ditch, and you have others who do. I mean, where's the start?
This is a hydraulic and hydrology study. This, this is not recommending policy changes. You know, the stuff that we're talking about here in this three-E approach, there are some policy things that we're approaching, but that is not part of the scope of what the engineers are looking to do. The engineers are sitting there with their pens and their paper and their calculators saying, okay, if we take it this direction, how much is it going to cost? If we take it this direction, how much is it going to cost? And which way are we going to spend the least amount of money to get the Pratt Road to stop flooding? And then come back and present these options to the council and say, okay, we've got option A, B, and C, here's our costs, what does everybody think?
But you say Pratt Road, but when you say Pratt Road, you're talking Hunter's Mill, and you're talking Nistale as well, just in the immediate...
Pratt Road has, the area that drains to Pratt Road and eventually downstream of the river has a four-hundred-and-seventy-acre drainage shed. Yes.
So they're aware of the, I guess they're, they're are going to take into consideration the breadth of it as far how it can, how large the project can get?
Yes, yes, and they're fully aware of that.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. In addition to the feasibility study, we are, we're doing surveying for seven potential, at seven different locations for possible drainage improvements. We have seven areas that were flooding during the storm outside of Pratt Road. Not to say that these are the only areas, but there are areas that we need survey and topography on to find out, okay, who's, you know, everyone's got these driveway pipes on the side of the road. Some people have replaced them over the years, they've put them back at the wrong elevation, they've put them back, and they're tilted the wrong direction. So what we're doing is going in and looking at and saying, okay, these are the locations where we need to basically go in and re-put these driveway pipes in, or re-channelize some of these swales, and what elevations do they need to be at? And to do that, we need to know what, what elevations they're at and what elevations they need to be, and that's what these, this survey work will cover. Yeah, this is through our on-call survey, survey contracts.
This work session, we also included Kwood Drive in there, but you, you're not putting Kwood Drive in this survey here?
No, in the case of Kwood, we had the design drawings. This, this is for alleviating the flooding along county roads that don't have, that we don't have design drawings for, to say, okay, well, what elevation was this pipe supposed to be in? It's through a lot of the older subdivisions and just random streets that... streets that just don't have.
I didn't understand that.
Okay, so Kwood Drive has a engineered storm drain system. We have the drawings that show what elevations everything is supposed to be at, through the pipes, through the swales, through the inverts and the grates and all of that. These roads that are listed along here, for instance, take, um, you know, Douglas Road, for instance. We don't have any drawings that show what those elevations are supposed to be at, or what elevations they actually even are at. There are flooding spots along Douglas Road, and we need elevation shots to figure out, okay, when we go out here and start digging this ditch to alleviate some of the flooding, or we go out and try to revise some of the grading, what direction do we need to send it? We don't want to just go out and say, well, we think it should go that direction, and then turn out and flood somebody else's property. That's what the, the, this survey data will give us. This is the, that's the information that we then turn around and use in-house to go out and increase ditch sizes, or, you know, modify some of the, uh, the drainage patterns, the stuff that we do for the work in-house. But we need to know what direction to send it.
Was these two bids by the same company?
No, no, the, the, the first one was, was a large enough scale project that was, um, you know, we, we bid it out, and then the other locations, again, we have on-call survey, we have survey contracts for, for local firms that are on-call. We did get price, we have three con- three surveyors on-call. We got pricing from all three, and this was the lowest one. The next highest was on this double this price.
And this is purely them just going out and taking elevations and reporting back?
Yes, exactly. Again, it's things that we can't do in-house.
So, um, in light of the fact that we know that Pratt Road and Kwood were two that we discussed the last time, are you saying that we are, are quite aware of all the, uh, where we need to make the improvements on Kwood?
Well, again, K- Kwood is a location that the, it was another area where we simply got more water than the system could handle. Uh, the, the, the pipes were flowing full, the, the water was going down. There are areas behind some of these houses where, where neighbors have built driveways across, put tiny pipes in, um, that, you know, they, they basically let yard waste and debris build up in their rear swales, that, again, it's all private, that, you know, that's a potential fix to fit, to, to, for the flooding on the back of the properties.
Right, but I think the homeowners need some type of an answer from the county as to where we're going to, if we're going to, where we leave off with that, as to whether we feel that it's county responsibility, whether it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Well, again, the, the stuff behind the house, that, that is clearly the homeowner's responsibility.
When a homeowner puts a pipe in that isn't the correct size, so that they can put a driveway there, is that a violation as far as what the county is trying to accomplish? Is, is there nothing to regulate that?
I- in the case of those prop- were the driveway behind the house, Public Works has no jurisdiction o- over that, as far as if someone wants to go in and throw a pipe in their, in a private swale, and, and put a driveway over top of it, we, we have no jurisdiction over that. And as far as we can tell, you know, right now, the, the county doesn't either, which is why we have further in, in, in the presentation, some suggested, not suggested legislation, but example legislation from other jurisdictions in ways that they've been able to go and address it. Because right now, we don't have any teeth to make, to either make HOAs or property owners clean out their ditches, or not put stuff in there, or not, or not pave them over. Or we, we also, we, we don't have any way to, you know, to, to get in there and make them, clean them back out afterwards. It's, it's, it's.
Do we know if the problem's further down? Because I know that on Pratt Road, uh, you know, you're, you're putting together a, a large study on Pratt Road. A lot of the comments that were made by the people that lived there were, hey, we didn't have this kind of flooding until you put the culvert in, and now we have that problem. And we've got a thirty-four-thousand-dollar study coming out. And yet, a more simplistic solution was, wasn't the problem there before the culvert was put in. In the same sense, on Kwood Drive, do we know whether or not the problem is the actual backyards, or is it where it, where that water goes into underground pipes to Parker Pond, that those pipes might be clogged?
It was twofold. There was clogging on the backside of this, this swale along the backside of the property.
Right.
The backyards were clogged swales, okay? The, the front, where it was draining the road, and it was going directly into these pipes, in those cases, there was so much water that the outfalls to those pipes, that they weren't clogged, they were simply underwater. Where these pipes go into the ponds that they were going into, the outfalls were underwater, so the water had no place to get out. It wasn't until those pond levels dropped that we started seeing the water levels drop along these roads. And that's why when you, you know, the, the assertion of a clogged pipe, well, when we went out there twelve hours later, that road was no longer flooded. If that pipe was clogged, that water would not have continued on down. You know, and, and that's what we saw across the board. I mean, I understand there's been some locations where people say, well, maybe it's just, it's not clogged, but it's restricted. But again, it was through the entire community. That mean, you were talking, if it was a, a restricted pipe for the entire community, you know, it's, it's just not the case.
How do you know it wasn't a restricted pipe?
Because when the pond level dropped, the water level on the roads dropped. It wasn't like the pond level dropped, and you weren't seeing the water level go down in the communities. The wa- the pond levels dropped, the water had a place to go, it left.
Yeah, I didn't see where the level of that pond was.
You, you made the comment that they didn't have these problems on Pratt Road until they changed the culvert. They didn't have these problems on Pratt Road until we had excess rain.
Well, no, when there was excess rain, there wasn't a problem either. In pre- in previous excess rains, there wasn't.
They never had an excess rain that year.
I don't know, I don't know, maybe not.
Yeah.
They're saying they have. So you didn't know the problem in Sandy went through.
All right, okay.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dallas.
Okay. Okay, so, outside of studies, our engineering efforts, we've been working all over, all over the county. These are just a, a sampling of a few. We've been working with state highway to clear out some of the ditches, um, places where they were holding water. Um, the pictures on the left are a clear location of clogged pipe. As, picture to the, to the immediate left is looking, you're on Snow Hill Road, you're looking back towards Cardinal Meadowlark Drive, okay? On to the, just to the right of that, you're, same spot, I've just turned around, you're looking down towards Nutters. That water is not going through that pipe underneath that driveway. Part of Cardinal and Meadowlark drain to that ditch. That's why we're getting that area cleared out. This is an example, when you say clogged pipe, that's clogged pipe. Water on one side of, of the pipe, not on the other. So again, state highway has actually already gone in there. They've cleaned out this section since we've taken the picture, and they're continuing on further down, because when, when you got, look now, the water's sitting on just this side of, of Nutters. So we're still working with state highway. They know the, the issues. Um, we've had flooding out there on, uh, for, on the lone Old Ocean City Road for those communities, um, between the railroad tracks and Old Ocean City due to problems with, with Peggy Neck Branch. Um, the railroad companies done work out there, the utility companies have done work out there. We've been working with all of them, and as you can see, the, the before picture, um, where there's a big pile of stone that was dumped out there, we're assuming by the railroad, uh, they've since come and got that out, that we've been, actually had, the, the new, the folks that, or that had, that took over the railroad have been very responsive to us, and, uh, we've gotten that area cleaned out. We've taken our equipment out there for the places they couldn't get to, a- and afterwards, we have swales that are flowing free. The bottom set is Forest Grove Road. We've had problems with beaver, beaver dams out there for quite a while, uh, and, uh, yeah, we're, we're, we're going out and busting out those dams and, and getting that water level, those water levels down.
That's what floods my road.
Yeah. So, so again, it, it, we're, we're not just saying, spend money, spend money, do studies, do studies. We're doing what we can in-house with our staff to, to go out and, and, and clear out these areas where we're having flooding issues. On the enforcement side, we've been working with the legal department to come up with some example legislation. Now, this isn't meant to be a, a, a presentation as to what should we do right now, but just an example of some of the things that we've been looking at, as far as, you know, getting the, the teeth to, to get these ditches and swales that are clogged up, cleaned out, and, and, and working with the homeowners associations. There's, uh, other locations so- that have nuisance ordinances. There's also, um, you know, again, stormwater utilities, stormwater drainage districts. We've talked about urban service districts for some of these drainage issues. Then there's also the, the public drainage or the, the tax ditch areas. Um, again, those, in, in the truest sense, tax ditches, tax ditches are run by the Maryland Department of Agriculture. They hire a farmer to go out there and keep them cleaned out, and everybody that has water that drains to them pays a certain price, and if your water works its way to there, you pay another price. And it is a potential model that could be applied to the county, uh, on some areas. But again, what we plan on doing is going through and, and looking and seeing, you know, what makes the most sense for Wacomiko County? Maybe it's one, maybe it's a couple, to, to, you know, again, not looking for a one-size-fits-all, but, you know, wha- what is it that, that folks ha- have, have the, uh, the willingness to do?
Can you back up?
Sure.
To the? Okay, your second paragraph, um, disruption of ditch or natural drains, drain and standing water. You know, we have a situation on the east side of the county, and if you get further into this par- um, paragraph, you're talking about redirecting water, standing water, um, you know, for breeding of mosquitoes. You know, we have a situation there where we had, um, Nature Conservatory bought like seven-hundred acres of land. They took the farmland and actually redirected the water. They dug shallow water pools. We call them mosquito ponds, is what we're calling them on our side of town, down there. And, um, so, you know, if we do legislation, wha- what do you do about dealing with situations like that? How, how do you control things like that? I know you're, you're talking about, you know, having people make sure they clean out their ditches and, um, other such, and how, how do you deal with making most residents do that, but then you have somebody come along and do a large-scale project like this?
Yeah, so i- in theory, we should be getting plans to, to review, what, what changes they propose to make. Um, I, I'm not sure if we, we, we got plans from the Nature Conservancy or not. Um, that, that's, you know, that's a unique, unique situation.
Well, I mean, they, they affected drainage along our roads. They affected drainage from other people's properties. They even had to go back and clear out some of the ditches they filled in to, um, I wouldn't say fill in, they, they moved the ditches, I'll put it that way, because they flooded people's yards. So, um, you know, this, I think this problem is a lot bigger than just making somebody clean a ditch out behind your house.
Yeah, so, you know, i- i- in theory, we should be getting copies of, of the plans, but, you know, hindsight, getting copies of what they've done, did they have a drainage plan set out? Are they going through and checking what, whatever their design was, uh, to see that it was being constructed properly? Looking at what were the hydraulics and the hydrology behind their proposed changes? And looking at that math and seeing, okay, hey, look, this, this doesn't really add up. We're getting flooding on locations you said we weren't going to get it? And then going back and working with them. I don't know what the hammer would be to, to, to get them to, to come to the table other than the county just, you know, and I'm not saying that they haven't come to the table before, but having that discussion with them and saying, look, what's going on? We want to see what, what changes you've made, what your drains are, what your elevations are with these, with all of the construction that's been going on out there. And it starts with just a dialogue.
Well, they did it before they talked about it. Um, in your next, your next, um, slide, pass an ordinance to impose taxes for new stormwater, stormwater drainage. Are you talking about countywide, or are you talking about, um, just, um, you know, places where we have the problems? I've heard both.
Yeah, a- a- and I think, you know, this is presented as to what legislation is out there already in places. What makes sense for Wacomiko County? Do we want to pass an overall-reaching tax for, for everyone? Or do we want to keep it more localized to the folks that are, are actually impacting these potentially new swales, n- new pipes, new storm drains to, to alleviate the flooding? Um, you know, i- if we are keeping it localized, then that does get more into, you know, the tax ditch scenario of just paying for the people who are, who are draining to that ditch, being the ones that help, help contribute to, to the maintenance and construction of it. Um, I, right now, I'm not suggesting any of these. I'm just presenting them to you, again, within thirty days, this is what we've come up with. We, we've looked at some example legislation, just to, to, to start kind of chewing on it mentally and saying, hey, what, what makes sense for the county? These are what has been done elsewhere. That, that's been kind of the premise behind a lot of the work that we've done over this past thirty days, is what have other places done to alleviate their flooding? And, and what have we done in the past to alleviate our flooding? And, and, and how can we move that forward?
Well, in looking at examples of legislation, it's, it's, it's pretty vague, um, and what, how you would enforce it, I can't hardly imagine, um, you know, going in on someone's property, telling them they got to clean the leaves out, and somebody else owns the other side of the ditch, and they're going to be arguing on whose leaves they are, and who has to clean what side out. So I think there's a, a lot of work to be done on this before we go any further.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Absolutely. This, this is not, this is not an endpoint. This is, this is just the beginning. This is discussion and moving forward. Again, it's, it's a three-pronged approach. You're, you're, you're seeing a month's worth of work on three separate topics. You know, it, it is, it's, it's, it's got to be a, like Wayne was saying, it's got to be a systemic approach to drainage in the county. We're, we're, it's, it's, it's not going to be a silver bullet, and it's not going to be, you know, done in a flash, you know? Again, we can go out and put a second pipe in out there underneath that culvert, but that doesn't address the large-scale issue of if we are going to start getting these larger rain events, and we are, you know, the, 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 we're, we're, we're seeing greater volumes more frequently, um, how do we as a county address that? And that's what these slides are about, the systemic approach to, to, to get those done. But also provide you some, some specifics as far as certain areas.
Mr. Gann, can I add one thing? I guess. I sent you all a blurb on this a week or so ago, but the county is going to be coming under new state stormwater regulations, it sounds like, around the first of the year or shortly thereafter. And I know Dallas and Wayne are somewhat tuned into this, but we don't know what they are yet, because they haven't issued them. Uh, but at least in the counties that have commented on it, it's going to be a big expense. I won't take any more of your time on it, but I, it's, there's going to be something coming down the pipe that's going to be significant in terms of cost and effort.
Yeah, and Bob was talking about the MS4 permit, the Municipal Separated Stormwater Permit. Um, i- i- it's, it's been happening in Maryland forever. It's Salisbury already has their program up and running. Uh, one of the things that I was tasked with when I first came on board was get ours running, because we know, you know, while the permit has not been formally issued yet, we know when the first submittal is, uh, which is, they, the county, MDE wants to see a map of all the impervious area in the county, and what we're going to do to reduce that, you know? The, the, the overall, you know, in a nutshell picture is, how much impervious area do you have? And how are you going to reduce that by a certain percentage that MDE dictates? Well, the first step in that is mapping out all of our impervious area, and mapping out where our, our stormwater ponds are, where all these BMPs and WIP projects are, because we get credit for that. And we actually get credit for all the things we've been doing back to two thousand and six. So between two thousand and six and today, anything we've done, we get credit for that reduction in impervious area. We're already getting spun up on that. We're working with, with SU and the ESRGC, uh, to, to get some of that baseline mapping done. I've done extensive work with this with the city of Salisbury. They just had a recent EPA audit last year of their system. I've sat down with them, talked with them about what was EPA dinging Salisbury on for problems with their system, so that I can say, okay, well, that's the lesson you learned. Let's apply that to the county, so that when eventually M- EPA comes in, we're not going to get dinged for the same, same thing. Um, a- and what's nice is also there's a lot of overlap between Salisbury and Wacomiko County, because we're all in the same area, and we have, we, we share a lot of the same drainage sheds. So, yeah, we're fully aware of it, we're spun up. We have projects proposed in the upcoming CIP. We have money in this year's budget to start seeding some of that and doing some of that work and we're moving forward with it. So I'm more than confident, we, we're already, we're not hitting the ground running, we're already running. We're getting the ball for it, so I've talked with MDE. Again, the first submittal due to them is in September of twenty nineteen. We're looking on schedule to probably have all of that mapping done in the early part of two thousand, I'm sorry, the early part of two thousand and nineteen. So the first submittal is September nineteen, we're probably looking at having our work done in March or April of that year. So we're in good shape.
Of course, it involves more than mapping.
Oh, it involves a lot more than mapping, involves outreach and involves illicit discharge detection and elimination. It involves going out and doing water sampling. So, yeah, and it's, there are multiple aspects to the permit.
Cecil County is estimated it'll be fifty million.
Yeah, and I don't doubt that some of these larger areas, it's going to be significant. But we have some good partners and, you know, we're, again, piggybacking off of some of the work that's already been done. We're going to do our best to minimize these costs and take credit where we can. So, you know, I can guarantee you though, a lot of these stormwater projects that would eventually be proposed for these improvements will include some portion of water quality so that we're getting a bang for our buck. Because then not only are we improving the drainage, but we're going to make sure we tag water quality. Because by doing that, not only are we helping with our MS four permit, but then we can tap into grant monies that are available for these projects. So it's all very synergistic.
Your prime, Lori, or was the state, correct?
State, and then before that, city of Salisbury and before that local consultant.
Working with the state, did you have any opportunities to work with the state of Delaware on drainage issues?
Delaware?
With them, I mean, working along with them for problems?
Not drainage in particular, no.
So we have a problem on Line Road, you're probably aware of where.
Where they're sending their water over to us and.
No, no, our water won't go to them because their ditch is full. And I've contacted the state of Delaware. In fact, I put a couple of calls in this week and haven't had them returned. And I was wondering if you had any contact information of anybody that we could.
I can dig around and try to see if I can find someone.
I've been working with Weston on it, we've been talking to the folks, but Delaware ditch won't get cleaned out and it's blocking the water up on the Maryland side, so anyway. And they have a pretty significant problem up there. It's been ongoing for a long time, so.
I can certainly ask around. Questions?
I just, you know, I just asked that county to the best of its ability, try to address these hotspots of flooding, you know, as soon as possible. It's, you know, it's great to have the long-term plan, but we have residents, I mean, on Pratt Road, there's now three houses for sale in that area that were not for sale before the flooding. So I just feel like we're letting our residents down if they feel like they have to move because of an issue like this where, not to say it's our fault, but it's something that we need to move on as quickly as possible to try to address.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We need to take about a five-minute recess so they can take care of the tapes. They have to read, they have to change tapes for PAC fourteen. Entertaining motion for recess.